Welcome, everyone. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is an update on our council for on race and equity. So last week, when the town board met, we discussed our collective interest in creating a council on race and equity to address those issues here in our community. Coming out of the sort of national conversation that's happening around Black Lives Matter and how do we improve racial justice in our communities and as a country as a whole, and also coming off of the very moving Board of Education meeting that had happened the Monday prior to our last meeting, the town board discussed wanting to create a short-term task force around the question of race and equity and how we could create an action plan for steps that our community can take to improve in this area. We have identified co-chairs for our council, Zabine Merza and Nichelle Maynard Elliott. And Zabine is here with us tonight. Nichelle unfortunately could not make it this evening, but we will be appointing them as the co-chairs of our council. And Zabine is with us and is going to walk us through her thinking around an mandate, an organizational structure, and some next steps for our council.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ivy, and good evening, everyone. And it's really great to be here and thank you for inviting me. And also, thank you to all of you for being so galvanized and so proactive in putting this council together and pushing it forward because it really is of paramount importance. So special thanks to all of you. I have put together a presentation. I will go ahead and share that here. If I have privileges, I do. This is a very perfunctory and kind of early framework, but I did want to share it with you guys so you had an understanding of where we are in some of our thought processes regarding how this council would look like. I'll go ahead and get started. I put together, just again, very quickly, a few topic points for us to go through. At any point, please stop me if you have any questions. Again, this is a very rudimentary kind of initial working. I'll take you through some of the mandates that I put together, a very baseline strategy, some areas of focus, how we can build capacities, some partner committees we could work with, a very general org structure, timelines, next steps, and some references for some of the things that I will be pointing out here today. So in terms of the mandate, what I referenced was an organization called GARE, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And what I first wanted to do was really define for everybody what racial equity is. And they define it as when race can no longer be used to predict life outcomes and outcomes for all groups are improved, and when we have successful systems and structures that work for all. So in my mind, and of course, I welcome your feedback and your insights here, the Newcastle CRE seeks to do the following: number one, commit to the achievement of true racial equity; number two, to deploy the necessary resources to support sustainable racial equity; number three, to utilize the power of government institutions and influence to uphold racial equity; and then, of course, number four, to work in partnership with others to achieve racial equity, not only within, but beyond our borders. And again, GARE put together this very successful six-point strategic framework, so I can't take credit for this. And I figured that we could successfully apply this here to Newcastle, and I'll show you some benchmarks for other cities that have done it. They've created a six-point strategic framework for deployment. So again, create the framework, build org capabilities, implement the tools, be data-driven, so we need to be measuring, looking at metrics, adjusting, continuous improvement, of course, partnering with other institutions and communities. And number six, which is, of course, super important, communicating and acting with a real sense of urgency. And of course, in all of this, transparency is absolutely critical. Everything that we do, there are two key areas of focus here. Number one is programs and initiatives that need to address implicit and explicit bias. And I just put a very simple example here. What is explicit and implicit bias? So you guys can take a look at that. How do we dismantle that? And then also, programs that address individual institutional and structural racism. And I put a graphic here that also defines what that looks like on all of those three levels. So for our council, we're going to be looking at programs that actively seek to dismantle racism across these focal points. So I showed you, I mentioned earlier, excuse me, that GARE's framework had been applied quite successfully in a number of areas, regional geographic areas. And I can share this presentation with you guys also later, so you can look at it more in-depth. I won't take you through the nitty-gritty details. Seattle has implemented it quite effectively. This is kind of just a breakdown of how it works here in Seattle with the working groups, you know, the different teams. This is a case study for Seattle, and you guys can take a look at this at your leisure afterwards, if you'd like. Fairfax County has also implemented this to great success. This is how they broke it down, some of the stuff that they've been doing, as you'll see in these tabs on the right. And of course, this is just here really to show you that this does work and it is working. City of Portland as well, this is what they've done, and they have implemented GARE's framework quite successfully. So how does this framework apply to Newcastle? So the first thing that I did was I looked at all the various committees and partner organizations in and around Newcastle that we could partner with to address some of the most critical challenges that are facing Black communities and POC communities and Indigenous communities here, directly in Newcastle. So Arts and Culture, also Friends of Chappaq, Discover Chappaqua, you know, Epic, the Holocaust Human Rights, the Chamber of Commerce, the Library, Newcastle Police, Parks and Rec. There are certainly contributions and partnerships to be had with all of these. And of course, I welcome you guys to please also share your ideas on other partner committees or organizations. What you're seeing here is a very, again, base-level initial structure for what this would look like. So we were thinking that we would have two co-chairs. And then what we would do is we would have working groups, and these would essentially be teams of people focused on each of these areas. This was, you know, all the working groups, there's about 13 here. This was an initial brain dump. But what we're going to be doing in terms of creating an easier management and workflow is combining all of these into maybe six working groups. Some of these can certainly be combined. Things like accountability and data, for example, could be a group, could become a function within every working group. So we're still working out kind of the nitty-gritty details. But the working groups are everything from business and commerce, communications, events, outreach, working with the PTA, the library, health and wellness, housing, sustainability. So how do we mobilize and then continue the good work that we're going to be doing beyond the short or midterm?
And then- Zabine, I'm going to interrupt you for just one second because I should have said at the top before you started that we received over 90 applications for volunteers for this council. And so part of what Zabine's structure takes into account is trying to include all of those voices. So, you know, it looks like a lot, but it looks like a lot because we have a lot of interest in it.
Yeah, and you know, we wanted to really capitalize on everybody's excitement and motivation to really get them all involved and not leave everybody out, find a place for everybody because this is everybody's job, right? It's not just the council's job, it's everybody's job. So with 90 applications, and I think we're still getting more, Ivy, as well, there certainly is no shortage of work to be done. So thank God for that because when Ivy first told me, I started having panic attacks about how I was going to do this. And we have 90-plus helpers now, so that is really comforting. So the working groups, and then again, a very preliminary breakdown of what group roles could be, very important on every group. We need a student voice. Every group should be led by a POC so that POC and Black voices are centered. Their needs, their struggles are at the forefront. And we want to make sure that every segment of our community is properly represented as well. And, you know, the idea is that when we have the six working groups, we then assign the roles. And then we have maybe the project manager or whoever from each group would report to the chair. So we have a little bit more of an easier communication flow than us trying to figure out what 15 or 16 different people are doing. So this was the idea behind that. Are there any questions about this before I move to the next slide? And we'll be fleshing this out and making this a lot slicker and cleaner. This is something I put together in, you know, very short notice as I have a little bit more of a thought about it. I can make it a little bit more, I think, fit for purpose. So the next thing that I have here is the tentative timeline. Our goal is to have the final working group selected by July 1st. So as Ivy mentioned, we have 90-plus people. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be sorting the applicants into the groups, the working groups that they have expressed interests for or they have shared their skills would be best suited for. And then we would be mobilizing them and then breaking those working groups down further into saying this person would be great for project management, for resource, for, you know, the student rep, for the secretary, et cetera. So we'd like to have the final working group selected by July 1st, which is in two weeks. I would like to also have clear KPIs and mandates for each working group by July 1st. The idea is that to have then each working group deliver recommendations by August 1st, to give them a month to really do the research, hit the pavement, figure everything out, start putting together some initial recommendations, deliver those by August 1st, which would give us some time as well to review for feasibility, what resources are needed, what additional support is needed, and then to begin implementation of those recommendations by September 1st, the latest, or sooner if possible. So in order to achieve these timelines, the next steps is Ivy, myself, Nichelle, also Stacy and Ally and a lot of, a few other people, we'll be sorting through the apps and shortlisting the volunteers into their groups. We're gonna be then having, we are planning to have a group Zoom session with all the working groups together to discuss the mandates and the KPIs for each. And then Ivy had mentioned that, you know, this was something for us to maybe host some listening sessions for. And these would be targeted towards specifically for ideas and action points. So our aim is to have two sessions of these to discuss maybe three working group topics each. And we're going to aim to communicate which topics will be discussed at each listening session so people can come prepared, have some ideas, and we can really make it effective and time-efficient. And of course, we would like to mobilize that as quickly as or as close as possible to July 1st as well so the working groups can integrate that into their own considerations. And then these are just some of the references that I use. And that's really it. Are there any questions or is there, are there any comments or feedback on any of this?
Very impressive.
Yeah, this was incredible. You really put a lot of work into this in a short time. It's really great.
Thank you. Well, it's important and you know what? We, if we want to do something, we have to do it right. We have to have a plan, right? When we have a plan, then we can start working out the kinks. And the interest is there, the excitement is there. We are blessed with a community of really smart, capable, skilled people that are committed to this. We can certainly do great things with this council.
Fabulous.
Yeah?
Okay.
Thank you, Zabine. That was fantastic and it's really thoughtful and just mapping everything out. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you so much for putting this together.
Thank you. Thank you for listening and thank you for caring and thank you for making this a priority because it's really important. I really appreciate it.
So this is great, and I think we're, all systems go on this, Zabine. One thing maybe we should think about and the town board should discuss as well is the cadence with which we would want you and Nichelle to kind of keep us informed about the progress of the work. And the other thing that I was thinking is just making sure that we build into the timeline an opportunity in August for the town board. You know, once you guys have, you and Nichelle and whatever kind of leadership team you, the two of you put in place, once you've taken those recommendations from your work group in and had an opportunity to kind of sift through them and put them through your own filters, just to be able to bring them to us so that we can, we can do the same and think about what is feasible for us as a town in terms of, you know, the resource asks and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I think, I think our goal is in order, we don't want to waste time or resource. So the goal would really be that it's not that after a month we inform you, it could be like on a weekly basis, this is an update of where we are. Because it's better to course correct immediately, sooner rather than later. So if there's like a weekly report or if you guys would like to nominate like a point of contact or if it's you, Ivy, I can just send you like a weekly update or progress or whoever it is, you know, just kind of somebody overseeing it that I could send or Nichelle, we can send, this is where we stand, week one. This is, and this is what we need from the board. Or, so I would break it down in what we have done, next steps, what we need from you, if anything. And there would be like three points every week, just to make sure we're all in step with each other and there's no cross-communication or confusion.
Great. Sounds great.
Yeah?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, so do I leave now and then you guys do your fancy town board stuff? Is that what happens?
You can go. You can go, and you actually like to stay and listen to us talk about our leaf blower legislation. But just so you know, Zabine, when we get to the end of the meeting and we do our sort of resolutions and actions at the end of the meeting, we intend to have a resolution and intend to pass a resolution that will name you and Nichelle as the co-chairs and officially designate the council on race and equity. So you guys are good to go.
Fantastic. And thank you so much and thank you to all of you. And again, we really appreciate all your support. And I know with your guys' support, it's going to be really great. We're going to do really good things together, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping up to do this. It really, you know, and Nichelle as well. I mean, you know, we, we could not do this without you, so thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure, guys. So take care and we'll speak soon and have a great evening.
You too.
All right. Bye-bye. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Okay. Yeah.
What's next?
I wish you would have given her a little time so she could have put something polished together. I mean, honestly.
I couldn't believe when she said, "I just threw this together in like an hour."
Okay, sure. Okay, revised leaf blower legislation. No pressure. No pressure.
Well, okay. Hello there, once again. I will, I guess, share my screen and give you a presentation, if so big. Can everyone see a presentation? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So I made this presentation rather short. Hope you don't mind. Let me just go into it, if I can get it to move forward. There we go. So not much has changed since we met last. I have to do, I have to admit, though, I am going to be speaking primarily from what is version three of the legislation because I, version four was presented to us late this afternoon. Not that there's that much difference between what is called version three and version four. And as, I think this slide is pretty much the same as you've seen in the past. We've been working at this now for three-plus years. We are still committed to trying to pass a leaf blower law to significantly reduce the effects of leaf blowers in general. We've been doing this by listening to the community, taking input from stakeholders, and we have come up with what we believe is a solution that would reduce gas-powered leaf blowers and introduce electric year-round, but reduce gas leaf blowers during the summer months. And is really following the guidelines of public safety concerns. So as we see it now, this is the executive summary. The executive summary basically says from June 1st through September 30th, there will be no fuel-powered gas leaf blowers with the exceptions listed below. And from October 1st through May 31st, gas and electric are permitted. The ordinance has been changed to allow to follow a noise level for domestic tools that follows the ordinances that are on the books currently. So from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. From 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturdays, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Sundays and holidays would be where the noise level for domestic tools, as it reads currently. All other times, gas leaf blowers or electric can be used but not exceed 45 dB. The exceptions, which is where we've been spending most of our time discussing, is Chappaqua Central School Districts is really where the difference between version three and version four is. And have to put us to the point where the SAB does not agree with the version four ordinance changes. And the difference between three and four is Chappaqua Central School Districts wants to be exempt and be able to use them throughout the school district. We still believe that they should follow the same restrictions that the rest of the town does, the town of Newcastle does, and only be allowed to use gas on the recreational fields and tennis courts. We don't feel that it is right to be able to use them on hardscapes and other parts of the property. I think it's a poor example to set. And I believe that the reasonings that John Chow has sent in as his means of needing to use them do not have warranted needs nor set the proper example for students in the younger community within the town. So even though I've crossed it off here, I'm crossing it off because I don't believe it is something that should be passed, and the SAB does not support it. But I see that ordinance was created on the 11th. We did not see it until this afternoon. So the SAB as a group has not really been able to discuss it nor have the opportunity to go back to the school district and discuss it with them. But as a small working group, the working group does not support it. But the rest of the exemptions is the town, Newcastle, recreational fields, tennis courts are exempt. All of the areas with the town administrator has determined that exists. Of public safety concerns, country clubs, tennis courts, homeowners associations, tennis courts, swim clubs, I'm repeating myself now, golf clubs and cemeteries. So that is really what it boils down to at this point. We do believe that this is good legislation to pass and we would recommend that the town move forward with this. The next slide. We did talk to other towns and we found that the SAB conducted study of many municipalities in Westchester where leaf blowing bans have occurred. Although over half of them do exempt their towns from the ban, most of them state that they try to set a good example, and here are some of their comments. We've asked other landscaper contractors to switch to electric. So even though they can use gas, they have asked their landscapers to switch to electric. We've taken, another one said, "We've taken to use alternative measures such as mulching and vacuuming where practical." And our town supervisor has discouraged their use. So even though they could use gas leaf blowers, we have found that most of the towns where they can, they have still taken the better practice of trying to use electric or have asked their landscapers to do the same. Here are some examples of where towns that can use gas leaf blowers are still supporting the use of electric where as much as possible. So here's Yankers, I believe, on the one on the left is Maric. The town of Bedford, and where Bedford is actually coming through with supporting AGZER, which is the group that we brought in as a demonstration group about two years ago with Dan Mabe and Sustainable Westchester. And there's also a quote of, "Will cost more if I'm not allowed to use a leaf blower." And some quotes that basically state that they don't feel that it makes. So that's the presentation I'm putting up forth. I mean, we've gone through this in the past. I think we have some good legislation to push forward the ordinance. And I leave it up to the town for discussion.
So version four was a result of the comments that we received back from the school district. So we had sent version three to Chappaqua Central School District, asking them for any comments they had on the legislation. You, I forwarded to you what John Chow forwarded to me after my conversations with Christine Ackerman. And basically, just asked council to take and draw it up so that people could see what version number four would look like, which incorporated Chappaqua Central School District's comments. The long and the short of it is, is that they had two primary concerns. Number one is that they felt that the eight o'clock start time was too restrictive for them, that schools actually started, and programs started before eight o'clock in the morning, and they needed the opportunity to be able to get on the fields and prep them for the field, for, you know, the teams that were going to be playing that day. And the second thing was is that they were concerned about gravel buildup in their parking lots. Because one of the things I said to them was, you know, do you really need to blow your parking lots? In the, you know, the summer, you know, June, July, August, do you really need to blow them? Because we've, we have ourselves asked our staff not to blow our parking lots just so that we could see what actually, what does it look like if you don't blow it? Is it just an aesthetic thing or is there really a safety issue? Because if there's a safety issue, then we would know it. It would be concrete and we wouldn't have to, you know, hypothesize about what would happen. We would know. So far, so good. There is a bit of gravel floating around. And they, the school district's position was is that the gravel is an issue. It makes it slippery for the kids, and they believed it was a safety issue. Do you believe them or you don't believe them? You think that's valid, not valid? That was their concern to me. So what you have in front of you is version three, which is the version that we spoke about last time, the version I sent to Chappaqua Central School District. And the before has the exemptions that the schools asked for. And I put them both in front of you and for your consideration.
Can I ask you, last time when we met, I think you guys were going back and Nick was talking to Lisa about some language that we were going to include. Is that what's in version three now?
I believe it is.
Yes, it is, yes. And we reviewed it with Rand as well.
And so what was the language? That's the language that talks about the, if the town administrator has a public safety concern?
I guess, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yes.
And the SAB supports the language that Lisa and Nick worked out.
Okay, thanks.
So I will say, I didn't think about it, but the school district does have a point that some of the teams, like baseball and a few of them, do have practice before school starts at like 6:30 in the morning or something. So, but then again, I think it's done by June 1st or close enough. I mean, if we have to move it to June 15th, for instance, for the, you know, it's only June to the end of September. So if we had to maybe move it to June 15th or something, I mean, there are no sports now nor would there be at this point at school. So I think if we had to move it a little bit to accommodate that, that's valid. But then again, there's, you know, they're exempt. They are able to do their fields, but I don't know if the time still plays or if that's also exempted. You know, the hours. You know, the hours.
Right. And the hours isn't the bigger issue, isn't the big issue. It's the blowing of hardscape, that is the big issue.
And what about, so aren't there, like, there are street cleaning machines that we have, those trucks that go through town when there's rubbish on the ground and stuff. Can that not be done at the school for once a week, or once a month, or whatever needs to be done?
Well, they, they could certainly get a machine like that and do it on their school property, sure. It's just, yeah, street sweeper.
Right. Or come up with a deal and rent it from us for the time they need it?
They'd have to speak to Jerry and Bart. But in a perfect world, sure. The definition of a shared service, of course.
So we're trying to make a decision right now about whether to set a public hearing and whether in doing so, we should move forward with version 3 or version 4. Correct?
That's right.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And in moving forward with version 3, we would be giving the schools the same latitude that we're giving to all other non-residential exemptions that we have here.
Right.
Including the town. Would the schools have the latitude to determine that something was a public safety concern? That, what does that mean, that language, Jill? When would you, as town administrator, determine that there's a public safety concern?
A water main break that resulted in a lot of gravel along streets that we weren't anticipating. The, a storm that came through, a storm cleanup, something that we, we, you know, don't normally have. I don't know, in the age of pandemic, I can't believe I'm having a hard time thinking outside the box about something that's never happened before. But exactly that situation, something that we just didn't anticipate.
Or there's like, and things become slippery because there's clippings on the ground, right?
Yeah.
It could happen, the weather's weird.
Do we need to have that language, though? Because it says in here that the Commissioner of Public Works can grant the temporary usage for...
Any kind of emergencies.
Any kind of emergency.
But wasn't the issue that, that it was the rec department that dealt with, let's say, parking lots where potentially there's an issue, not DPW?
Right. And so that was the issue, is that because we were trying not to give the blanket exemption to all town activities, because initially, this is something that DPW would just deal with. Now, now we've delegated it to parks, so they're taking care of the, you know, some of the hardscape throughout town that we didn't want to have to extend the blanket exemption to them as well. If it's parks and it's DPW, it ends up being all town activities. So we were trying to walk it back.
Well, but if we don't want people blowing hardscape and we're going to take a hard line with the schools, I'm willing to take a hard line with the schools, but then we have to take a hard line with ourselves, too, in my opinion.
And the SAB is willing to work with the school and with the town to find alternatives to these perceived issues or these real issues.
I just think that, with all respect, I think there's a difference between the school property and full sidewalks, where we're inviting people, everybody, the public, out and about.
I don't know about that, though. The sidewalks at Greeley would get used by thousands of kids a day.
So what if, I, I understand the idea to put something if there's an emergency, because it gives us a public emergency, because it gives us that leeway if we need it, with the plan that not everything is a public emergency, and we're not going to use that very often. But if we need to, it allows us to. So I think the worry is, not everything at the school is going to be a public emergency either. Is there a way to craft it so if they feel, much like any other resident, that there is going to be a public emergency, that they need to come to the town for approval, like a variance or anything else that people would need to do? And it's the town that's deciding that, as opposed to the school deciding that for its own property?
We could craft that language, yes. That language could be crafted.
I mean, that would put the onus, unfortunately, on like the town administrator, probably. But if that's, if the town administrator is the one who's deciding if there's a public emergency for the town, you would think the same thing should be able to hold true for the schools.
And maybe, but it's not going to happen that often. It's going to be fine.
But that, I think that's, how is, how is that different from what's there with regard to the role of the Commissioner of Public Works? Being able to grant a temporary usage of the... Is this a different?
Well, because it's not town property, I, I don't know. I mean, the thought is that gravel on the, in the parking lot may not be a public emergency, but there may be the same issue that the town is going to find as a public emergency, whatever that may be, may also impact the schools.
And the terminology is, terminology is public safety concern, right? Not quite an emergency, per se. And so I have no problem with the town administrator deciding if a particular situation is a public safety concern, whether it's for Newcastle or for CCSD.
Right.
Can I, can I ask a question? Did, did we take out the language walkways and sidewalks? And that's why we put this in?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. Okay. That's because, because there really is a difference to me between sidewalks and walkways and parking lots. I, I don't know that there's, I mean, and this is the question that I asked when I spoke to Christine and John, was, you know, do you really need to blow the parking lots?
Right.
That's a massive hardscape. The sidewalks and the walkways, I get, and I get it for the town as well. But is it, isn't it just an aesthetic element when you're just blowing the, you know, these vast parking lots? You just don't like seeing the clippings on it, you don't like seeing, you know, a leaf or two?
Well, and don't forget, it's blowing those hardscapes predominantly in the summer.
Right.
You know, and most of your drivers to school in terms of students, once June hits, they're not really there anyway. Like, the seniors are mainly not in the school in June.
Right.
Senior experience, and so it's really June, July, August, and, you know, maybe September is somewhat of an issue, but it's one month.
Right.
So I see that we have a comment from Steve. I don't know if we want to try to bring him in, if that's possible? Or you just want me to read this out loud?
Sure, I can open up his line.
Okay. Steve, we're going to put, we're going to put you in.
Ah, Steve, Steve. Okay, you just might have to unmute yourself. Oops, there we go.
Hello.
Hi, Steve.
You can't see me, the button, I guess, but.
I can hear you.
Yeah, so I, as...
Whoop, hang on, I was just moving him in so you could see him.
Now we can't see him on here.
Steve, where'd you go?
There he is.
He's back. Okay, we can see you if you would like.
Okay, trying. There we go.
Ah, there he is.
Love the beard.
Yeah, pandemic beard. It was out to here for a little bit, and then I, my wife made me turn it back. So, yeah, I, I mean, I think the way we saw it was that, and this potentially is a challenge for Jill, but whoever the administrator is going, you know, sometime in the future. But essentially, the language, I think, that Lisa helped craft is, it's a fail-safe mechanism. So the school will be fine, parking lot's will be fine. If all of a sudden, you know, as Jill said, that there's some sort of storm, or it's very windy, or there's many wet leaves or something like that. You know, it'll be okay, we can handle those situations. And if it turns out, Jill, that you're getting many phone calls and in a particular category, let's figure it out, let's find a way, we'll find a solution for that particular category. But, but this way, I, I think that, you know, we're mitigating, you know, the risk of really any kind of health hazards.
So then, is Jill's authority to make a public health determination town-wide? The way, the way it's written right now, or the way it appears in the legislation right now, to me, I thought it was only as pertains to town property.
It, it, I agree, that is what it says.
It is. We're suggesting we would extend that.
And it's a safety issue, not a health issue.
Yeah, safety, that's right.
Oh, sorry. Right. If it's a public health issue, we should probably never...
I was going to say, please, no.
Yeah.
Let's not rely upon me, okay?
And so now I'm, this is where I got a little tripped up, because how, how is that different from the role? Nick, maybe, maybe you're the one to answer this. How is that different from the role we were giving Jerry or the Commissioner of Public Works?
Public Works.
Muted.
We can't hear you.
It's a fair question. Well, this guy didn't have a good answer.
Buying time, huh?
Yes, exactly. So I'll have to go back and look at it. I mean, I think the initial intent with Jerry was just towards storms, and then it was expanded to include other situations. And then Jill was started out with, because Jerry didn't necessarily control the town operations, the exception for Jill started out with being with the town functions. And you're right, it is broader than that. So I think the two are either overlapping or certainly occupy the same area. But I don't know that it adds anything that's not already in there.
But, but I thought Jerry's focus was more on storms or emergencies.
Right.
And Jill's is more not related to emergencies, but related to just a public safety.
There, you know, there's gravel on a section of whatever it is, and, you know, kids are riding their bicycle and they're, you know, they got hurt. I could send, you know, somebody in there with whatever equipment we need to be able to address it. That was going to be it. And if it happened to be a gas blower, then it was a gas blower.
Okay. I like the way Lisa wrote the language, though, if we can just extend that, you know, to, to all.
CCSD.
Sort of town. I don't think just to CCSD, I mean, we should really, I think then it should be...
Period, for everyone.
Townwide.
Right.
Oh, I didn't realize it was only town property, but yeah, so it really gives you right for anything. As long as you don't have 100 people coming to you every week.
We won't advertise this broadly. Nobody will.
Right, right, so.
Nobody's watching.
Yeah.
So you'd like that language modified to make it really, it applies to anything that Jill determines as a public safety issue, whether it's on private property, school district property, or town property?
I mean, I, I don't know if, if others think it can replace the clause that speaks to what the Commissioner of Public Works role is.
You know, if everything goes to Jill, Jill can consult with Jerry if it's a public work issue.
I got to be honest with you, I, because Jerry's the one that gets called out in the middle of the night for the, you know, the water main break or whatever it is that's happening. You know, he's the one who's going to have to make the decision. I mean, maybe he gets to me, maybe he doesn't, and he's, I would feel more comfortable, and I think the town is better served letting him dictate that specific...
Okay.
Emergency and let him, you know, let me not slow him down. Because he, you know, whatever.
And I thought the language was still for the Commissioner of Public Works.
Yes, it is, that, that remains.
Yeah, that's the way it's worded.
Yeah, that's in 4, that should stay there, because you're right, there's some water main in the middle of the night, they're going to wake up Jill to say, is this a safety issue?
What do you think, should we use this blower or that blower? Let them use what they need.
But I think in 5, no, you know, paragraph 5, you still need that for you for all the other things that aren't necessarily DPW emergency-related.
Right.
Right. Which hopefully will be used very seldomly.
Right.
Right.
And I have to tell you, Steve, so we haven't been blowing our parking lots for the past six weeks. And you know what? They're fine.
That's good. Which is, I think the...
I mean, I do, I do have to tell you, some of my parks guys are twitching because they, they really, really want to do this. But, and, and I have to tell you that when it's a, when it is a gravel parking lot, it is harder for them to walk away from it, rather than just a hardscape.
Exactly.
That's because of the nature.
Mind you, our parking lots are being, our parking lots are being used a ton for biking and so forth at the moment.
Yeah, and they're fine, and they're fine. Of course, they're not getting a lot of, you know, car traffic, so I think that probably helps. That's what deposits all the gravel all over the place, but yeah.
Very good, a new normal.
All right, so where, where do we, where do we land?
Can we set the date for the public hearing? And just with the, making note of those changes?
Yes, that would be permissible. So we'll make sure the copy circulated for the public hearing reflects tonight's changes.
Great.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so just, we're clear?
Yeah, to be clear.
What is the date of the version that we're making the changes to? Is it version 3? Yes?
My understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that when we set the public hearing, we're setting it on the right one. Okay, great, so version 3.
Well, it's version 3 as revised.
Right, as revised, tonight. Okay, as opposed to version 4. And what are, what are our thoughts about setting a public hearing in over the summer versus...
Oh, sorry, you know what, I'm sorry, there was one other, there was one other change that went from 3 to 4, right? There was the change in the hours. Right? So the school district asked for two things.
Yep, they asked for earlier.
They asked for earlier.
Yes.
And I think we were amenable to that request, understanding that there are, you know, the school starts before 8:00 AM and that there are maybe teams practicing.
Yeah, the difference was starting them at 6:00 AM versus the rest of the community starting at 8:00 AM. And I think you'd be hard pressed to start 8, 6:00 AM in the general community. And I don't think people would want to start to hear leaf blowers at 6:00 AM.
No. But the way I read it in 5 is that because the CCSD, you know, rec fields, fields and tennis courts are exempted, that it would exempt it from that time restriction as well. So then if they needed to, I'm just reading it again, so that then if they needed to do it before that time, they could.
Yeah, so they just can't do their sidewalks and their parking lots, which is fine. Okay, they don't, yeah.
Right, the fields and tennis courts are exempted, so it would, I think, exempt them from the time restriction as well, correct?
Nick, do you agree?
It should, yeah, I do, yes.
Yes.
I'm just looking at it now, yes.
What? So I actually thought to myself, when they asked, said we need 6:00 AM, I actually thought, they're probably not allowed to do 6:00 AM right now under the current code.
Because the noise ordinance is right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know that we...
Are that, are that tools considered domestic tools?
Yeah.
I mean, I wonder, they don't blow the fields and the tennis courts every day.
No.
When they're, you know, teams are playing, so it's probably like right after they mow the lawn.
Right, and then they stripe the fields for the, I mean, that, I, I know that they go out and they do early, but we're not really affecting them with, with that, with the striping of the fields. It's just, it's possible with the baseball diamonds and stuff like that, that's how they clean it off to, for, you know, the teams to be able to start. You know, I'm thinking more like soccer fields, but the reality is, it's the baseball diamonds that need to be. Well.
And the tennis courts. But again, we're only restricting it from June through September, right?
Right.
Yes.
So it's just not...
And their teams are not playing then, right?
Right. I mean, there's a chance baseball could be playing beginning of June, but certainly maybe a week, that's it. And, you know, September, the tennis courts are being... You know, September, the tennis courts are being used, but otherwise. I don't think it's it's, I don't think they're gonna need it that much.
Yeah.
And perhaps it falls into the exception where the administrator would be allowed to allow it to be used then.
Okay, can you include that when you?
Well, I'm trying to think if it falls within the public safety exception. If that's the reason we're doing it.
Well, wouldn't it be easier to have it fall within the the field and tennis court exemption?
Yes. Yep.
Rather than have to go to Jill to say, yes, you can blow the tennis court because there's gonna be a match in the morning. Um. Wouldn't you, couldn't it just fall under the fields and tennis courts are exempt?
No, because it still would be a violation of the noise order.
The noise, right, we still have the noise, assuming it's, which I'm sure it is, it's above the DBA level. And the noise ordinance is right.
But then. But the noise ordinance has been in effect this whole time.
Right, exactly.
And not enforced.
So maybe we separately want to tackle that issue at a later date and not hold up our legislation for that. I mean, maybe at some point we need to true up the noise ordinance to come into compliance with the way that. People have been operating.
I think that's the better approach.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we go back to my question, which was. What are your thoughts about when we should set this?
Um, when, when, when can we do it?
And I think we should, I think even if we did it during the summer, we we have, for lack of a term, litigated this. For the past, since last administration. So it's not as if this is new. We want everyone to play a part. They've had many opportunities. We should certainly notice it. But I think let's just move the ball forward one way or another.
Okay.
We don't have to wait until to to start discussing it again.
So Christina, July 14th? We're meeting on the 14th and the 21st.
And it's important to know, and if we noticed noted it before, that it will no longer be on Zoom on July 14th, correct? Or is that?
As of this point.
Yeah, it may be if the governor extends it. Currently expires July 6, I believe it is, and so.
Right. So how do we notice this, Nick? If we don't know if it's going to be Zoom or otherwise.
We we have standard language that we've given Christina. We'll work on with that.
That we do, okay, that we do both, okay. All right.
Yes.
All right.
I'm not gonna be around on the 14th, but if it's Zoom, I can always attend.
See, this is why we should continue doing the Zoom. Because you can.
I love Zoom.
Yeah. Um, I I I mean, do you want to kick it over to the 21st or? Leave it on the 14th?
I think the 14th is good.
I think Rand should be available in the event that it's, maybe we can't do a Zoom. I think, you know, Rand, this is Rand, shepherding this the whole time.
Yeah, so you want to make it the 21st? Make it the 21st.
I actually can't do the 21st.
Oh, well, there you go.
If the board meets, if the board meets live, you could just have Rand attend via Zoom.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay, so let's do the 14th. Okay, great.
Okay. So we'll notice it for the 14th.
Great.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks you guys for coming.
My pleasure. Take care and enjoy your meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, Jill. What are the board meeting dates in August? Do you have them in front of you?
Um, August. I had August 11th. Christine, is that right? Lauren, yeah, right? Yeah, August, August 11th. Does that work for you?
Yeah, looks like that's the only date set is August 11th.
Right.
Yeah, I traditionally only have one meeting in August, right?
Right.
11th.
And then, uh, because we.
September 1st is next after that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Ready to go through the rest of the things? Then the next is an authorization to award contracts for the tent rental. So these are the three tents that we're going to be using for our day camp at Amsterdam.
Thanks.
The next is the the Westchester hotline. Using the wrong thing. Hotline agreement, this is an agreement, it's just a renewal of an agreement that we have with Westchester County. Um, it's, uh, they give us equipment for no charge, and we promise not to break it, misuse it, things like that. And it continues the same E911 system that we've been using. The the next is adoption of minutes. And then payment of claims, which is a late addition, but came by about, came through, I want to say about noon today, so hopefully people had an opportunity to review.
I did not review it yet.
All right, we'll have to make it earlier next time. Hopefully enough board members. Um, okay, and then we've got our proposed actions.
Okay. Who's ready to go?
Wait, I thought, are we doing the public hearing for the local law?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, the local law, geez. Um, where are you?
Wow.
Unbelievable. Oh. It's all right, I would have caught up on my very first resolution when we approved it.
I had it.
All right. I'm using the old agenda that it was up top.
All right.
It's Tom with us?
Tom?
He is here. Let me unmute him. Tom, can you hear us?
He might be away from his computer.
Yeah, so he's connected. Okay. Well, Nick, I want you to talk us through. Tom is here, just in case anyone had any questions with the actual administration of applications.
Town Board introduced and referred to the Planning Board of McCounty proposed local law that would create a new section A dash 142 of the code. That would allow the creation, expansion of outdoor retail sales, gym operations, personal care services, and dining areas during the COVID-19 pandemic. In essence, it suspends zoning with respect to the expansion of outdoor areas for business purposes. During the during the pandemic until November 15th, and delegates that to the building inspector and sets forth some relevant definitions, as well as discretion to the building inspector. And it was referred to the county. The county provided a response saying that they did not believe they had the authority to refer. It was not within their jurisdiction because we weren't adding something to the zoning ordinance. The town planning board reviewed at a special meeting on June 11th and issued a review memorandum on June 12th. That's in your packet, making some recommendations regarding the wording. All three changes were reviewed with Tom and then made into the version that you have before you. And the. Planning Board also noted that the Planning Board enthusiastically supports the enactment of this innovative local law. And the board is eager to see how businesses and the community react to this initiative, and we hope we all learn more from this experiment. So Tom for hearing tonight.
Can we just have a motion open? I don't think we did that.
Nope, it's gonna be open next.
Pressure is so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
No, I I think this is terrific. I think we got to, this is a fabulous idea that. Need to.
That you came up with, Jeremy? Was this a fabulous idea that you came up with?
Think it's, no, I didn't, it's something that needs to be included to help our our. Retailers and restaurants. Otherwise, they're gonna have a more difficult times. Glad we're moving the ball forward.
Jill, do you know how we're doing with this? Have we gotten any?
We have. So I know for a fact that within town, we've had, I just spoke to another food establishment. Tom can hear, but he can't speak. Carrie, are you able to bring him in?
Sorry, is that him on the phone? Let me see if this is him. I'm sorry if this is. Um, is that you?
I'm on a phone. Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
Okay. This other one, okay.
Yeah.
Tom, you there?
I am, yes.
Much better.
Much better.
So can you tell us how we've been doing so far with our restaurants in town?
We have two applicants. We have the tavern on top of the hill, and today we've got Susan B. Lawrence coming in, and we've got her application we're reviewing.
Terrific. And I think Bobo said send something to us as well.
They're in the process of giving us a better drawing. Their drawing was really rough. And Mike is sending the drawing and the application to us so that we can approve that as well.
Terrific. Terrific.
So we're we're in good shape, and we'll go forward with that.
And you had actually gone around, or or maybe Robbie Bancroft had gone around and handed out the notification to all of the restaurants in town that we had this new program?
Yes, both of us did that.
Yeah. Matter of fact, Susan Lawrence today mentioned to me that they had that they had received it from Robbie. They came in, explained everything to them, and they were thrilled to jump on the bandwagon, so.
Great.
So do we have any, just need to see if it's public comment, and if so, then you could. Close order in the hearing if you don't.
And since it does apply also to other types of businesses like retail sales, retail sales, gym operations, we should probably just make sure that. The chamber is well aware and they're telling their members, and so not just dining establishments.
Understood.
The idea, right, was that we were gonna do. Start with the restaurants.
Right, they had an extra step.
Didn't have the ability to open yet. And the retail, so because we're, we were, we are in phase two. We would start with the restaurants because if they wanted to be open, they had to be outdoors. Um, and we would do sort of a push with them, and then we'd come back and do a second push with. With the other establishment.
Have you looked, how successful has it been in Danbury? I think that's what you initially were looking at. Do you know?
I honestly, Jeremy, no, we haven't followed up. We know we've, I've looked at some articles and haven't heard any issues with it. But I haven't followed up in Danbury.
I think we should close, move the ball forward. I keep on saying that tonight, move the ball forward.
There's nobody on the line waiting to speak.
Okay.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Tom, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
You're very welcome. Just for a point of interest, we have 24 vacant storefronts that we calculated today.
Wow.
So the registry will be put into effect. We're working on that.
Great.
Wow, thank you.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, should we start our resolutions?
Please.
We move to adopt a local law creating chapter A 142 of the Code of the Town. Concerning the creation, expansion of outdoor retail sales, gym operations, personal care services, and dining areas during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
All in favor?
Right. Um, should, I didn't look at it yet, but I guess others can move. I move to approve the payment of claims amount of $1,532.56.
One million.
Yeah, one million, 533, geez, I can't even say it. One million, 532,000, $56.76. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report in detail voucher details prepared on June 16th, 2020, checks will be issued and mailed to each point listed on Wednesday, June 70, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I move to adopt the town board work session minutes from June 9th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to hire Jonathan Doyle as a seasonal laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department, the hourly rate of $13 per hour effective June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
I authorize the hiring of the below individuals for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department for the 2020 camp season. At the rates listed below in the table, effective June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, I I authorize approving the rental of three tents from Durkin's Tent Rental to be used at Amsterdam Park for summer camp July 13th through August 14th, 2020, for the total amount of $6,725.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Take us home.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, Lauren.
Um, there's there's this this resolution as well as the the race and equity resolution, right?
Yeah.
Um, I move to authorize entering into an agreement with Westchester County for the Newcastle Hotline Agreement to facilitate the speedy communication of information and coordination of operations between the town of Newcastle and Westchester County. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, sorry, I'm just trying to move this so I can see it. I know I should be better at my computer. Okay, I move to authorize to create the Newcastle Council on Race and Equity. To approve the following, whereas the town of Newcastle believes that Black Lives Matter and the physical and psychological harm institutional bias causes throughout our society, whereas we acknowledge that these biases exist in our community as well. Whereas we accept the challenge to create a more just society. One whose foundation must include racial equity, now therefore be it resolved that the Newcastle Town Board establishes a council on race and equity, a task force led by Black and. POC community members to create an action plan over the next three to four months, and be it resolved that the town board appoints Sabine Merza and Michelle Maynard Elliott as the co-chairs for the council. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then there's a motion to set a public hearing on the local law regarding leaf blowers for July 14th, with such local law amended to reflect the edits made by the town board tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, that's exciting.
Well, I can, we can move to adjourn, move to say goodbye and move to adjourn.
Indeed.
Can I just say one thing?
Oh.
Quick, wait, wait.
Get it out there.
The recycling center is open. Started this week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, so starting Saturday, June 22nd. Not only is the recycling yard going to be open, but the residential yard waste area will also be open starting this Saturday from 7:00 to 2:30. Ooh.
Jill, do you know if you can dispose of, like, if someone has an old grill or an old fire pit? Is that something that a recycling center could take?
I believe so, yes.
You do?
Yeah. Santa Pro won't pick it up at your curb side?
No, it's not, not me. I'm just.
Oh, okay. I I think Santa Pro will pick it up. You can't do the propane tank, but the, you know, the grill and stuff, you can. The metal, they'll take it. Okay?
Great. Hey, can I get one more comment before we close? I just want to. Mention what a great job our Recreation and Parks Department, our Newcastle Police Department, did this weekend. Uh, with an incredible number of events going on, some of them impromptu events. Um, and I think they they, all of those events ran incredibly smoothly. And they were instrumental in making sure that 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 they happen, whether it's the school district events, the. Uh, the the movie and, you know, a rally against racial injustice, so. They were really fantastic this weekend.
Second.
All in favor?
I I move to adjourn before anyone says anything else.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. Bye bye.
Bye. Thanks, everybody.